The buck on the wall says 6:00 p.m., so we're going to go ahead and call the meeting's order at 6:00 p.m. This is the Huntley Community School District 158 Board of Education regular meeting. At real call please.
Mr. Crady, Mr. Biman, Mr. Troy?
Here.
Mr. Beckety?
Here.
Mrs. Murray?
Here.
Mr. Bobby?
Here.
Mrs. Myrino?
Here.
Alright with that, we have a forum here of five board members. Next item is to move to closed session and move to enter in a closed session at 6:01 p.m. For the following items on our agenda. The appointment, number one, the appointment, employment, discipline, performance or dismissal specific employees or legal counsel. Item nine, disciplinary. Item 11, individual student matters. Item 21, discussion of minutes or meetings lawfully closed under the Open Meetings Act.
Second.
Second, Mr. Beckety. Real call please.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mr. Beckety?
Yes.
Mrs. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bobby?
Yes.
Mrs. Myrino?
Yes.
Alright motion carries 5-0. We are in closed session.
Hi, I'm Kendall Sarks and I'm an N A H S member. A few of the experiences we have been doing this year so far is one of the Culver's Hunt historical funding to where we got to help serve other people, open doors for others, and make their days by helping out not only other people's days, but helping out for the fundings of the historical faculty. Another thing, another thing we got to do was volunteer for others. We stepped back for others and we got to let others run and enjoy their good day experiences. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Susannah Kuna and I'm in eighth grade and doing adjustments. I'm sure my favorite form of, my favorite form of service is going to the elder senior home, helping the elderly with different things. Some of the things I like to do there is follow bingo numbers, play different board games, help them with different arts and crafts and activities, and in general spend time talking with them. They always like hearing my stories and I like hearing all of their stories and experiences as well. And it is always really fun seeing them smile and be happy. Thank you for having us today and have a great night.
Thank you. As I said at the very beginning, thank you very much for being here this evening. Thank you for producing us, the N A H S. I'm not used to using Notewallers, so bear with me on that, but thank you, thank you very much. Please come up on the table and take your picture, your picture.
Thank you. Great job. Thank you.
It takes a lot of courage to get up here and speak. That in itself was a great, uh, and the mindset, so the face job, incredible job.
You guys can slide that way. Do you want to touch down? No. You don't have to do that. All good. Thank you guys for having me. Do you want to, do you guys want to picture?
Parents, come on up.
Oh boy, here we go. Okay, we got, we got moms in here. I love it. Thank you. One, sorry. The Android, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Sorry about that.
Yeah. Okay, here we go.
Thank you. Thank you guys so much. Nice to meet you. Thank you. All right, with that, we'll move to item five. Are there any public comments? No public comments this evening, okay. With that, item six, I'm gonna move to suspend the regular meeting so we can slide into the budget hearing. I'm gonna send the regular meeting at seven twelve P M.
Second.
Second. Second from Mr. Iredo. On favor of suspending the regular meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so that just suspended temporarily and then we move into the budget hearing. All right, I have to deal with the digital. All right, with that, we'll call the call to order budget hearing meeting for September eighteenth, twenty twenty five for the school district one fifty eight. Have a roll call, please.
Mr. Beckety?
Here.
Mrs. Murray?
Here.
Mr. Bobby?
Here.
Mr. Iredo?
Here.
Mr. Craddy?
Here.
Mr. Troy?
Here. Okay, we have six board members in attendance. Item two on this agenda is the budget hearing itself. Mr. Altmeyer, I'll turn this over to you.
Thank you very much. You know how after eighteen years and knowing that this process of the budget really starts in January or February of every year, this is super exciting for me to present about the fifth draft of the budget and finalize the budget for the district this year. You know, there've been numerous changes along the way. I do have a presentation and I'm gonna highlight some of the key points, some of the key points of some of the modifications we made from the last draft as well. We've made several in an effort to, well, bring the budget back to a surplus position. So we'll walk through those changes. You know, I always start the picture off with pictures of our kiddos and I am very thankful actually that we have kiddos in the audience today. So thank you for being here because we do what we do. We allocate funds, you know, for the district, for the community, for the, for youth students so that, well, we can drive their future, right? Everything we do is about the students, right? So it's all students always and we have a strategic plan building tomorrow together and a fiscal kind of strategic plan that drives the process of maintaining responsible, transparent financial practices that prioritize, well, student learning, right? Ensuring operational excellence and supporting the district's strategic planning goals. So this budget, I am proud to say, does, well, all of those things. It sets aside all the monies we need for technology, for capital projects and operations and maintenance, the things we're doing for students on a daily basis. We had to make some modifications this year. We had to tighten our belts a little bit, but we got to a point where ultimately we do have a balanced surplus budget. Just at a really high level, we're gonna talk about big picture, we'll talk about the modification, we'll highlight some of the revenues for the district so that for the people watching at home and for the students that are here today, you'll understand where the revenues come from. We'll talk about the expenses that the district incurs at the glance and we'll also talk about the risks and ultimately the reconciliations for the board to approve this later this evening. At a very high level, we're a hundred and thirty-nine million dollar, you know, organization, right? We bring in approximately a hundred and thirty-nine million dollars of revenue. This year's budget has a hundred and thirty-eight million, point seven million dollars worth of expenditures and you could see there last year's budget as well as the current year budget with an operating surplus of five hundred and ninety thousand, two hundred and seventy-three dollars. Some of the modifications from the last draft of the budget, if you recall, the last draft of the budget, we were in a deficit position primarily driven by health insurance. One of our biggest challenges we have in the district the last several years is the cost of health insurance. It continues to rise at ten, twelve, fourteen percent per year, which is millions of dollars to the district on a year-over-year basis. And we're doing what we can to keep that in check, if you will, and we're still working on that. But because of that, we had to make some budget cuts along the way and some of those budget cuts are here. As part of the process, we did do a reconciliation of salaries because as you remember, we did have a lot of retirements last year. We hired a lot of new employees as a result of attrition as well as a result of some of those retirements. We also had some unfilled, unneeded, if you will, positions that the district no longer needed. And upon that reconciliation, there were savings of approximately eight hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars that were recognized in this last draft of the budget. So that will help us this year and certainly it will help us in years to come. And in years to come, we will have some of that same type of, some of those same savings come our way, whether it's an unneeded position moving forward or it's a position that, well, it's a retirement being replaced by a first or second year teacher possibly. Other areas for which we made adjustments to inventoryable supply technology, that's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So we modified our timing of purchases within technology a little bit so that we normally advance purchase, you know, several hundred thousand, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars with the Chromebooks and laptops on an annual basis. Unfortunately, we can't do that, so we're gonna have to wait till July first to make that purchase and get those Chromebooks and laptops up and running for next year. That's a timing benefit that we have there. Fiscal supplies and fees, we reduced for an operational focus on banking fees. The district does incur several hundred thousand dollars a year in banking fees primarily as a result of merchant service fees. And so we're gonna be working with those banks as well as merchant service fees and probably during the year, we will bring some ideas back to the Board of Education in an effort to reduce those fees. And so we do have some ideas that we will work with the board on, so that is being reduced by sixty thousand dollars. Building small projects, we're reducing by fifty thousand dollars. Now, this is a line item within operations and maintenance that when, you know, a principal has an idea to modify their building or enhance their building, well, we have a budget for that, right? We have nine buildings and sometimes our principals do have valid needs and reasons to make small modifications to their buildings. But this is one of those areas that we're taking a pause on those small projects this year and we reduced that budget from seventy-five thousand dollars down to twenty-five thousand dollars. The other two were just adjustments we needed to make. The high school drivers had vehicles typically
They always like hearing my stories and I like hearing all of their stories and experiences as well, and it is always really fun seeing them smile and be happy. Thank you for having us today and have a great night.
As I said at the very beginning, thank you very much for being here this evening. Thank you for producing us. The N A H S, I'm not used to using those letters, so bear with me on that, but thank you, thank you very much. Please come up and say hello to me. Take your picture, take your picture.
Thank you. Great job.
Thanks a lot of courage to get up here and speak.
That in itself was a great, uh, and a nice one.
Nice job. Incredible job.
You want to touch down? No. We don't have to do that. Thank you guys for having me. Do you want to, do you guys want to picture?
Parents, come on up.
Oh, boy, here we go. Okay, we got, we got moms in here. Thank you. One, sorry. Android, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Sorry about that.
Yeah.
Those would have been better.
Okay, here we go.
Thank you.
Thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you. All right, with that, we'll move to item five. Is there any public comments? No public comments this evening, okay. With that, item six, I'm going to move to suspend the regular meeting so we can slide into the budget hearing. So, I'm going to the regular meeting at seven twelve P M.
Second.
Second. Second from Mr. Hiirino. On favor of suspending the regular meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so that's just suspended temporarily, and then we move into the budget hearing. All right, I have to deal with the digital. All right, with that, we'll call the call to order, budget hearing meeting for September eighteenth, twenty twenty five for the school district one fifty eight. And roll call, please.
Mr. Beckety?
Here.
Mrs. Murray?
Here.
Mr. Bobby?
Here.
Mr. Hiirino?
Here.
Mr. Craddy?
Here.
Mr. Troy?
Here. Okay, we have six board members in attendance. Item two on this agenda is the budget hearing itself. Mr. Almeyer, I'll turn this over to you.
Thank you very much. You know how after eighteen years and knowing that this process of the budget really starts in January or February of every year, this is super exciting for me to present about the fifth draft of the budget and finalize the budget for the district this year. You know, there've been numerous changes along the way. I do have a presentation, and I'm going to highlight some of the key points, some of the key points of some of the modifications we made from the last draft as well. We've made several in an effort to, well, bring the budget back to a surplus position, so we'll walk through those changes. You know, I always start the picture off with pictures of our kiddos, and I am very thankful, actually, that we have kiddos in the audience today. So, thank you for being here because we do what we do. We allocate funds, you know, for the district, for the community, for the, for youth students so that, well, we can drive their future, right? Everything we do is about the students, right? So, it's all students always, and we have a strategic plan building tomorrow together and a fiscal kind of strategic plan that drives the process of maintaining responsible, transparent financial practices that prioritize, well, student learning, right? Ensuring operational excellence and supporting the district's strategic planning goals. So, this budget, I am proud to say, does, well, all of those things. It sets aside all the monies we need for technology, for capital projects and operations and maintenance, the things we're doing for students on a daily basis. We had to make some modifications this year. We had to tighten our belts a little bit, but we got to a point where ultimately we do have a balanced surplus budget. Just at a really high level, we're going to talk about big picture. We'll talk about the modifications. We'll highlight some of the revenues for the district, so that for the people watching at home and for the students that are here today, you'll understand where the revenues come from. We'll talk about the expenses that the district incurs at the glance, and we'll also talk about the risks and ultimately the reconciliations for the board to approve this later this evening. At a very high level, we're a hundred and thirty-nine million dollar, you know, organization, right? We bring in approximately a hundred and thirty-nine million dollars of revenue. This year's budget has a hundred and thirty-eight million point seven million dollars worth of expenditures, and you could see there last year's budget as well as the current year budget with an operating surplus of five hundred and ninety thousand two hundred and seventy-three dollars. Some of the modifications from the last draft of the budget, if you recall, the last draft of the budget, we were in a deficit position primarily driven by health insurance. One of our biggest challenges we have in the district the last several years is the cost of health insurance. It continues to rise at ten, twelve, fourteen percent per year, which is millions of dollars to the district on a year-over-year basis, and we're doing what we can to keep that in check, if you will, and we're still working on that. But because of that, we had to make some budget cuts along the way, and some of those budget cuts are here. As part of the process, we did do a reconciliation of salaries because, as you remember, we did have a lot of retirements last year. We hired a lot of new employees as a result of attrition as well as a result of some of those retirements. We also had some unfilled, unneeded, if you will, positions that the district no longer needed, and upon that reconciliation, there were savings of approximately eight hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars that were recognized in this last draft of the budget. So, that will help us this year, and certainly it will help us in years to come. And in years to come, we will have some of that same type of, some of those same savings come our way, whether it's an unneeded position moving forward or it's a position that, well, it's a retirement being replaced by a first or second year teacher possibly. Other areas for which we made adjustments to, inventoryable supply technology, that's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, we modified our timing of purchases within technology a little bit so that we normally advance purchase, you know, several hundred thousand, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars with the Chromebooks and laptops on an annual basis. Unfortunately, we can't do that, so we're going to have to wait till July first to make that purchase and get those Chromebooks and laptops up and running for next year. That's a timing benefit that we have there. Fiscal supplies and fees, we reduced for an operational focus on banking fees. The district does incur several hundred thousand dollars a year in banking fees primarily as a result of merchant service fees, and so we're going to be working with those banks as well as merchant service fees, and probably during the year, we will bring some ideas back to the Board of Education in an effort to reduce those fees, and so we do have some ideas that we will work with the board on, so that is being reduced by sixty thousand dollars. Building small projects, we're reducing by fifty thousand dollars. Now, this is a line item within operations and maintenance that when, you know, a principal has an idea to modify their building or enhance their building, well, we have a budget for that, right? We have nine buildings, and sometimes our principals do have valid needs and reasons to make small modifications to their buildings, but this is one of those areas that we're taking a pause on those small projects this year, and we reduced that budget from seventy-five thousand dollars down to twenty-five thousand dollars. The other two were just adjustments we needed to make. The high school drivers had vehicles typically set aside for twenty thousand dollars a year. We reduced that by ten thousand because the need that they have this year is ten thousand dollars for the two vehicles that the board approved several months ago for the high schools, so that would be the least payment that they needed there. In addition, we have contracted services because we have unfilled positions, key positions, we do have contracted services in hand, and this would bring our contracted services to where it needs to be, so that's an unfavorable adjustment. But since the last draft of the budget, just four weeks ago, we have made and adjusted over a million dollars in adjustments to get us to where we need to be, and that's a balanced budget moving into FY twenty.
Mr. Almeyer, do you want questions throughout or at the end?
Um, no, you can, you can ask a question throughout.
My question is about the, the purchase of Chromebook. So, how does the timing of the purchase of those devices impact students that are getting refreshed devices, getting new devices?
Yeah, it doesn't impact them at all. They'll, they'll still receive their new devices at the start of the school year, it's just the timing of when we place those purchases. We like to usually place those purchases early in the year so that we can get them up and running a little easier over the summer. The summer months are, you know, a very busy time for operations and maintenance, a very busy time for technology as we're preparing certain areas where a lot of the projects get.
Thank you.
No impact. Good question, very good question.
Mr. Almeyer's inter taking questions now.
Sure.
A question about some assumptions that are in these cuts. Were there any cuts or freezes or delays in positions related to special education services, special ed teachers, paraprofessionals, related services, therapy staff?
There was absolutely none of the adjustments that you see here or previous, previous adjustments that we have made have been to the special education.
Thank you.
Can I add one thing to that? We do, we do want to say that some of those are in our contracted services, so we did need to go out to contract. There are a few positions based on need last year that we did add and increase in various areas for special education, but I do also want to say we are not fully staffed, so those dollars would be allocated if we continue to recruit and try to hire, but we do have some open positions out there, so while we did not cut, we do have a few that are still needing to fill.
Okay, thank you. And my second question is just abatement assumptions? What, what assumptions do we have in this?
So, within the debt, we, we pulled the debt abatement assumption. So, in the previous versions of the, the budget, not impacting the operating budget of the district because, as you know, Bob, an interest is non-operating, we did pull that out. So, in the previous versions of the budget, we had taken out seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in tax levy revenue, right, to account for a possible future abatement because of the financial position that we see ourselves in currently administration and in talking to the board at the last meeting. But we have decided to pull that out, and we will talk about future abatement at the December levy as we typically do.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, at a very high level, here's our revenues at a glance. Nothing, nothing better than a pie chart, really. You know, thank you to our community because sixty-one percent of our revenues come from property taxes, right? Come from our commercial property owners as well as our residential taxpayers. Approximately twenty-five, thirty percent of our revenue comes from the state. The majority of that comes from the evidence-based funding formula. We have some challenging times with the evidence-based funding formula. We'll talk about that on the next slide. The other state revenue are reimbursements from the state. We call those categoricals, and we receive reimbursements from prior year expenses for private facility expenses as well as transportation reimbursement, so those are called categoricals, and that's under the other state revenue. The other local revenue is primarily the food services and the registration fees that we collect from the parents and the students throughout the year. Lastly, we have the corporate personal property replacement tax, a very sliver of a piece of revenue, and the three percent federal revenue is primarily for the idea grant, special education dollars, the title money, as well as national school lunch and Medicaid accounts for about three percent of our revenues. I did want to share that.
Mr. Almeyer?
Yes.
Which chunk of the pie has been most significantly impacted based on the district changing which tier it falls in?
That would be the orange, the evidence-based funding.
Okay.
Okay, and so there is one additional revenue slide, and it's, it's the additional revenue that we receive from the state of Illinois on an annual basis under their evidence-based funding plan. Now, the evidence-based funding plan is how the state calculates their allocation of dollars, right? And so, over the years, you could see that the additional revenues that the district has received has kind of been all over the place, right? From seven hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars in twenty twenty-two to where we are today, right? And over the years, what we, we saw the benefit of being from a tier-two district to tier-one, meaning a tier-two district is a district that is considered to be inadequately funded. So, the state of Illinois ranks all the districts and puts everybody in tier-one, two, three, or four. If you're in tier-one or two, you are considered inadequately funded, and that's why it's called adequacy level. And for the first year, we were, in twenty twenty-two, we were in tier-two, and then we moved to tier-one, and we received that increase in funding to one point two million dollars. In twenty twenty-four, we remained at tier-one and received two point eight million dollars. In twenty twenty-five, we again remained at tier-one and received one point two three million dollars. There was a decrease there, and then this year, we slipped back into tier-two funding adequacy, and we're only receiving three hundred and four thousand dollars. That was a surprise. We talked about it at a previous meeting. That million-dollar decrease in revenue from the state of Illinois is why we haven't paid for this past year. So, you can see over the last five years what our funding is. I wanted to point that out to the board. Okay, looking at revenues at a glance, local revenues are expected to increase by five point nine million to ninety-six point six million primarily driven by our property tax revenues of five point nine dollars, which is driven by the consumer price index of two point nine percent. State revenues are actually decreasing by forty-four thousand. We showed you a slide that shows that, well, it's going to increase three hundred and four thousand dollars for the evidence-based funding model, but we have a few other grants that are decreasing, the decrease in the transportation grant funding of a hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars and a decrease in the orphanage and teacher vacancy grants of a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. As of today, those are all known amounts, but we are seeing a slight decrease in state funding. Lastly, we are expecting federal revenues to stay relatively flat with the FY twenty-five budget. Looking at our expenses at a glance, as you see, benefits and salaries and benefits approximate seventy-nine percent of what we spent. It's over twelve hundred full-time employees or sixteen hundred with part-time employees in the system, right? You can see why seventy-eight percent of what we spend is for employees and benefits, but that benefit pie keeps getting bigger and bigger because health insurance taking a larger and larger portion from what we have to set aside on an annual basis. And we have supply of material, purchase services, contracts. I do have a few things noted here that I can provide some additional detail. I do want to talk about health insurance because we did highlight that, but here is a five, six-year history of health insurance. There was only five, six years ago, we were at nine point eight million, and we are expecting to be at sixteen point two million dollars this year, right? Today, it's over eleven point six percent of the overall budget. Just a few years ago, it was less than ten percent, so that keeps creeping up, which is very concerning. Over the last several years, the district has experienced a lot of increasing claims, a lot of large claimants in our, in our system that are accounting for the majority of these. Little more detail on salaries and benefits. Salaries and benefits are expected to increase six point oh four million primarily driven by union and non-union increase of increases of four point five million, a decrease in base salaries of eight hundred and seventy thousand dollars. We talked about that and that adjustment that we made on this last draft. And then lastly, benefits, health insurance, payroll taxes, T R S costs increased by two point four million driven by the fourteen, primarily driven by the fourteen percent estimated increase in the health insurance. Purchase services are expected to increase by a hundred and eighty-three thousand. There's a few reasons. There are two hundred thousand dollar increases, increase in expenses associated with our financial and H R implementation skyward. We have an increase, annual increase of a hundred and seventy-two thousand. For contracted services, that's well over a two million dollar line item for our second shift contracted custodial services, and we also have a eight hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar decrease in estimated, no removal. We talked about that adjustment at the last draft of the budget. Last few, few items, supplies and materials are expected to decrease by five hundred and two thousand, eight point three million, a decrease in new adoption of expense of four hundred thousand dollars, as well as a decrease in the technology inventoryable supplies of two hundred thousand we had just cut. Capital outweigh is expected to increase by a hundred and sixty-three thousand to two point nine million. The primary projects include the asphalt improvements, the new carpeting, and the new chiller at the high school. As a reminder to, to the board and the community, all of these capital projects were done this past summer, so these are already locked and loaded in. Otherwise, that may have been an opportunity to kick the game down the road. That will be an opportunity in the future, and usually, we go out to bid for a lot of these types of projects in the month of January, February, and March. And so, when we hit that time period this year, which is only a few months away, we will have some serious discussion about what we do want to set aside for capital projects this year so that we can make sure that we do have a balanced budget for this whole year twenty. Capital spend, this is capital spend by year. So, every year, we spend anywhere from three to five million dollars on, on, you know, capital projects so that we can keep our buildings up and running, which includes the carpeting, includes the miles of road and parking lot that we own, the asphalt. And a lot of these costs that you're seeing, back in twenty twenty-two and even twenty twenty-three, we were replacing a lot of, doing a lot of roof replacements at our various buildings. So, the good news for the district is all of our buildings are fully replaced with new roofs, and we don't really have to worry about that for another twenty years. That's the good news. The, the big tickets on, that we're seeing in twenty twenty-five, twenty-six, and beyond for the next several years is what we call mechanicals. Would be the chiller, the, the heating and venting air conditioning units that we have on all these buildings. And as you can imagine, you know, you know what your air conditioning unit looks like and cost at home. Well, for our buildings, multiply that by twenty or so, and some of these, some of these chillers that we're looking at are multi-million dollar chillers. The chiller that we just did at the high school was well over a million dollars, and next year, we, we are in need at Heinemann of replacing the chillers at Heinemann, and that is going to be upwards of maybe two point five, two point seven dollars. That will be a big ticket item, and that we will have to discuss in the next several months related to next year's budget.
How much, how much room is there in the capital line item for emergency funds or emergency situations, right? I know we're going to talk tonight about damage that was done at Marlo, right? There's going to be costs associated with that. Does that come out of this fund or does that come out of, I'm going to use the word savings, even though I know that's not the right term?
Yeah, so, so there's several, several different points I think we could make. The district does have a fund balance, right? We carry a fund balance that's currently about twenty-eight, twenty-nine percent of our overall operating revenues of a hundred and thirty-nine million dollars a year. At the lower bottom line there, you see our unrestricted fund balance. That's how much cash we have on hand as of one day in time, typically June, ends of June thirtieth each and every year, but that's considered kind of our savings account, our fund balance account. So, there's always an opportunity to deepen the fund balance for specific needs. Right above that line item, we have a reserve for replacements. So, several years ago, when money was flowing good, we were managing the budget really appropriately, we were able to set money aside and have the board specifically reserve part of an operating surplus. At the end of the year, we set that surplus aside and, and passed a resolution to specifically and only use those fund balance dollars as a reserve for replacement for capital projects. So, currently, we have four point one million dollars that we could utilize for those types of projects, obviously having that approved by the board, but that is extra money that we previously set aside for that exact purpose.
Thank you.
Let me add component number three, though. We do have a capital projects fund, and the capital projects fund is part of your budget packet that you have online that I also have hard copies here if you would like one. It's a great hundred-page document, so I will share that if you like that. Within this document, there is a capital projects fund, and that capital projects fund is primarily the revenue that comes into that capital projects fund is from impact fees, and we used to use those fees to pay off debt, the debt associated with the Marlo middle school addition. Well, the Marlo middle school addition and that debt has since been paid for, and so now we have over a one point four, one point five million dollars almost, with twenty twenty-five, the audit is, obviously, we're wrapping up the twenty-five audit right now. We have over two million dollars of funds sitting in that capital projects fund that is also available dollars that we can use for capital projects in the future as well. Now, knowing that we collect and we have collected over one point, last couple of years, one point four, one point five million dollars of year, of, in impact fees, we can use those impact fee revenues to offset some of the cost of future capital projects as well. So, that's kind of good news for us because historically, those funds, in that fund, the capital projects fund will one hundred percent use to pay, pay off debt and/or we use it to help with abatements in the future. So, we're going to end with the debt because I think it's really important that the community and the board understand where we are from a debt standpoint, right? We have nine years left, right? Nine years left of our mortgage payments. The good news is we did a lot of restructuring in levy years, you know, from levy year fifteen all the way up to levy year twenty-three, and restructuring our debt so that from years, levy year twenty-five through thirty-four, our debt is relatively flat for the community. So, that's good news for the community and will help each and every year on the overall tax rate as well. So, we end with this. This is, this is, again, our proposed budget. Our recommendation is that the board approve the FY twenty-six budget with operating revenues of a hundred and thirty-nine million, two hundred and ninety-eight thousand sixty-six dollars, with operating expenses of a hundred and thirty-eight million, seven hundred and seven thousand, seven hundred and ninety-three dollars, with an operating surplus of five hundred and ninety thousand, two hundred and seventy-three. Right, we always talk about risk. There's always risk with the budget. The biggest risk we have, I think, is health insurance, right? I think we know that. We did budget almost a two million dollar increase from last year's budget, a fourteen point seven percent increase. But we've done that the last several years, and unfortunately, we've been a little unfavorable to budget the last few years as well. So, we'll continue to work on health insurance. We, we actually have a health insurance committee meeting next week, a meeting with our alliance brokers to hopefully work with our health insurance committee to make some changes that will benefit the organization as well as our employees so that we could kind of get on the right path, so to speak, for health insurance and our members. So, that's one risk. The other risk is just risk of execution. And we say execution risk because, you know, we never know if, if something's going to happen to one of our buildings. We never know if a chiller is going to go down. We never know if, if an emergency capital project comes along that we address, and that's always a risk. But other than that, I'm really happy to present the fiscal year twenty-six budget for recommendations to the Board of Education later this year. Any other questions?
Yeah, Mr. Almeyer, I have a question tied to the health insurance, and I'm going to be the person to say I'm not an expert in healthcare insurance or health insurance in general. I, I am, been recently aware of a program called the Medical Expense Reimbursement Program, or M E R C for short, where employees can keep their, say, in this case, Blue Cross, Blue Shield, healthcare insurance, nothing changes there, and it's a third party that offsets some of those costs that the district would work with that could lead to positive benefits for employees as well as savings for the district. I'm not saying we need to do that. I'm just more so proposing a question as we meet with the brokers, can they give us a side-by-side comparison for future years to look at? What is, what's the savings and what's the benefit for employees, not for this fiscal year, but for future fiscal years? Because the rising costs are, as you said, they're not going to go down, and it's a nationwide problem. At some point, something's got to give on how we look at benefits.
Yeah, for sure, and we, we have addressed, the M E R C plan is primarily a program used for fully insured health insurance plans.
that could lead to positive benefits for employees as well as savings for the district. I'm not saying we need to do that. I'm just more so proposing the question as we meet with the brokers, can they give us a side-by-side comparison for future years to look at? What is, what, what's the savings and what's the benefit for employees? Not for this fiscal year, but for future fiscal years. Because the rising costs are, as you said, they're not going to go down. And it's a nationwide problem. At some point, something's got to give on how we look at benefits.
Yeah, for sure. And we, we have addressed, the MERC plan is primarily a program used for fully insured health insurance plans. The district is self-insured, meaning that we, we take on the risk of all claims, we pay all claims. We are, we are also a little restricted because of our union contract that we have with our employees on the types of plans that we carry and have. We have as a health insurance committee, we have with our broker identified a lot of different opportunities and ways in the future for which hopefully we can reduce overall health insurance. One of those ways then we did look at was the possibility of switching to another carrier, you know, leaving Blue Cross Blue Shield, going to, going to a different type of provider. And we have looked at a lot of those different avenues and costs. And we're going to share a lot of that information with the health insurance committee next week. So you can be assured that administratively, we, we have looked at a lot of different things that we will be sharing with that committee. And when the committee makes a decision as to how to move forward on the current plan that we have, we're going to bring that forward within, I believe, the next month or so. Because open enrollment is just around the corner. So we'll be able to provide a little more detailed update to the board at that time.
And for that, with, with the MERC program, if the district is self-insured and it requires fully insured, and I'm not saying even for this fiscal year, I'm just talking about future years, could alliance or brokers still say, this is what would look like if you switched over to fully insured with this program compared to as is today? And just have the side-by-side comparison for future years again, not, not this fiscal year?
Yes, they, they absolutely could. But I would probably caution based on our size, that would be a very, very big number. It would be much bigger than what we're seeing today.
Okay.
Yeah. Because those, those fully insured premiums, they set those up to absolutely positively ensure that they're not going to lose. Right? You know, the 16.2 is an estimate that the underwriters think that we're going to be at for, for the plan year of 2026 or the fiscal year 2026. When an underwriter looks at it from a fully insured standpoint, it's not going to be an estimate. It's going to be an estimate with a 10 or 15, 20% cushion because they also need to make sure that they don't lose money. Yeah, so it would typically, that's what you would see. Which is why in 2000, I do believe eight, seven or eight, the district adopted to go self-insured at that time. But we can absolutely do that, yes.
Thank you, yeah, just go another thing.
And every few years, that question of self-insured versus the other option. But it does come up because people change. People that come to these meetings change and the public often ask, but why are we doing it this way? Why aren't we doing it the other way? And so thank you for asking and answering that question to give people that perspective and understanding of not just how we came to be, but why we continue down the road of self-insurance.
So I had a quick question. I know with the medical, do we have an idea? Are, are, are expenses increasing from a pharmaceutical standpoint? I know there's a lot of new medications, for example, even for like treatment of migraines. There's a lot of whole injectable medicines and those are like $4,000 a month. So do we have any wiggle room with pharmaceutical if that is impacting our costs?
Well, I will absolutely say it is, you know, specialty drugs, specialty RX is a big component of what we're seeing, right? A big component of the annual increases that we are seeing are related to specialty drugs. But it's also related to the fact that we, we have a lot of large claimants, a lot of members, a lot of dependents within our pipeline, more so than even in prior year, that are creating the increase in claims. But a lot of those members, a lot of that cost associated with that is ongoing pharmaceutical cost, much of it being specialty RX.
So do we have any options or are we, or are we locked in with our plan and our contract?
No, we, we worked with Blue Cross Blue Shield, we worked with Alliance to better understand, are there other options? For some of our claimants, unfortunately, there's only one specialty RX that would help, right? For some of these other ones, there are other options. And we do kind of work with our members and Blue Cross Blue Shield works with our members as our third-party provider to make sure that they're on the best plan available to them at the lowest cost possible. But, but when you say specialty RX, there's not a generic for specialty RX and that's why it's called specialty RX.
Right.
Right? So it's kind of a, it's, it's a tough one to answer.
And it's needed. People need these medications to be able to function and it's helped us so. Can we get better pricing directly from a manufacturer or just? Just, I was just thinking outside the box, do we have any kind of avenues that we could explore?
I think those are things when Mr. Almeyer talks about kind of looking at the plan and the pieces there that a light will be able to bring back. They're not only looking at deductibles and things like that pharmaceuticals, although I assume being looked at, the meeting hasn't happened yet, it'll be coming and we'll be able to bring something, so.
Yeah, and there's different RX providers, right? We're tied in with the Blue Cross Blue Shield RX provider and that's called Prime. When you're with Blue Cross Blue Shield, that's essentially the provider you have to go with. I will say the pharmaceutical business on its own, there's a lot of pressure on that business these last few years. If you've heard of Mark Cuban Pharmacy, you haven't, there is, there is a Mark Cuban Pharmacy. He has a pharmacy and he's putting a lot of pressure on the pharmaceutical business to make sure that even the generic costs, the generic cost that we're paying today are lower. Because if you look at Mark Cuban Pharmacy for all the generics, you could almost receive sometimes two or three or four times the quantity of what you can receive through a Prime generic or any other pharmaceutical company generic. So he has come into the marketplace and put a lot of pressure on, on even, you know, Blue Cross Blue Shield to lower their cost and change their cost structure on a lot of the generics. So we're starting to see a little bit of that. But that's not really, that's not the big ticket item. The big ticket item is, is we have really sick people that are in need of specialty RX. And that's, that's a different ballgame. So a little history there.
Thank you for myself and for anybody that's kind of, you know, listening tonight. We, we say the budget hearing's been, a lot of people kind of tune in, they want to hear that. There's things that they haven't heard before because they haven't listened to a meeting. Can I ask you to rewind for just a second to tier one, tier two? And can you explain for anyone who may be watching first time tonight, what are some of the thresholds and does the district have any control over that? Or does that goalpost kind of change based on, you know, for people who are listening to?
There's really no threshold, but, but the way in which the, the state of Illinois determines adequacy level, right? Our funding is based on our adequacy level. The way in which the state determines adequacy level is a very complex formula where they look at literally 32, 34 different pieces of data, right? From how many students we have, how many low-income students we have, to how many special education students we have, to where we live, it's regionally calculated as well. To determine as a school district with 8,500 students, being in McHenry County, Illinois, having this many special education students, having this many low-income students, this is what we would estimate you would need. And then they back out our local resources to determine an adequacy percentage, determining are we at 70% adequacy level or 85% adequacy level? Then they set additional money aside and for the last seven years, the, the state of Illinois has set aside additional $300 million to be allocated amongst all of those districts, right? That $300 million, 99% of that $300 million goes to tier one and tier two districts. And this is an important piece that the board I don't think is aware of. 50% of that $300 million, 150 million is given to tier one. But 50% goes to tier one, 49% goes to tier two, okay? So knowing 150 million goes to tier one, that's how they allocate it. And they determine the adequacy cutoff level based on how they're allocating those dollars. Because once that 150 million dollars allocation runs out, that's where the line is that determines tier one versus tier two. Mr. Bidman said something in a, a few meetings ago when, when we learned that we had a million dollar cut in funding. And what we learned was, and what he said, and I mentioned this as well, was there was almost 100 school districts that fell out of tier one into tier two. And they fell out of tier one primarily because there were two districts, primarily CPS and Rockford, who both entered into tier one and they had increased funding of 80 million dollars. So 80 million of that 150 million dollars was allocated like that. Gone, which is why almost 100 districts fell off the list from tier one into tier two and had significant cuts in funding. So Woodstock District 300, 158, just to name a few in McHenry County, we all saw very large decreases in the state funding. So hopefully that little piece helped.
Yes, and for anybody who's listening, it's not exclusive to us. Saying, you know, we were, we were thinking one thing, how the money was allocated and this is why it impacted us. And I remember that conversation, but again, I asked the question for newbies. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions? Thank you.
All right, with that, next item is public comments. Do we have any public comments for this budget hearing? Here and see, no, so we're good.
No, that's correct.
Right, with that, next item is number four, the FY24 budget. You're seeking approval in the budget hearing. You move this ahead to the general meeting, correct? That I move to approve the FY26 budget as presented.
Second.
Second, Mr. Bobby, we have a roll call vote, please.
This is Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Bobby.
Yes.
Mrs. Myerino.
Yes.
Mr. Craddy.
Yes.
Mr. Troy.
Yes.
Mr. Fekety.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero. Item five is adjournment of the special hearing, the budget hearing. Move to adjourn at 7:51 PM.
Second.
Second, Mr. Fekety, all in favor of adjournment of the budget hearing, please say aye.
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 You, you against? Motion passes to adjourn the budget hearing. Zero, we'll move back to suspended regular meeting, resume that at 7:52 PM. We need a roll, let's do a roll call just to make it official, please.
Mr. Bobby.
Here.
Mrs. Myerino.
Here.
Mr. Craddy.
Here.
Mr. Troy.
No, here.
Mr. Fekety.
Here.
Mrs. Murray.
Here.
We have some board members present for that. Item eight of the general meeting, revision and adoption of the agenda. Are there any items to be removed from the rest of the seating? All right, not hearing any, I move to adopt the agenda as presented, period.
Second.
Second, Mr. Fekety, all with favor, please say aye.
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 Anybody else missing?
Aye.
Any other opposed? Okay, no opposition, motion passes six zero. Item nine, superintendent's report.
There are just a few things to highlight. I know that other cabinet members will touch on these, some things, so I hope I don't overstep on the some. Just one update from our strategic plan from last year, that was at KPI 4.4, where we were looking at staff retention. We were very confident we were going to hit that, but wanting to make sure that I did circle back with all of you that the district did end with meeting with that KPI with a 93.2% staff retention rate. And again, we had to hold off on that a little bit because we wrote that goal until the end of August, which took us past our last board meeting. So wanted to make sure that I did follow up with that. Second, we had our very first parent teacher advisory committee, that PTEC meeting, and a lot of new members. We did have returning members. Again, as you know, that is a board committee. But it was really great to see a number of representatives from various grade levels, various buildings. So I thought that was really, really good. And it has that blend of, that new perspective of, of some things that we could look at, learning and being able to take information back to individuals and groups that they are with. But also to have that perspective of the returning members who know the work that we have done, have been doing for the last two. So primary goal of this meeting, because of the, so many new members, was to be able to make sure that we looked at the policies that this committee does oversee. As we did a little speed dating activity to get to know our policies and what our strengths and opportunities for clarity were. Some definite resounding themes that came out from some of the areas of clarity is just because individuals don't know. People don't often go to the board policy section of the website. And so how can we take some of our existing policies that impact our families, our students and our staff and make sure that we are highlighting those on a regular basis and then making them user-friendly? What, what do they really mean rather than just reading all of those words? So some, I guess we're sparked there about how we can creatively better inform our families, parents and our students moving forward. But also then spent some time having individuals put, what are some possible task force areas? And there are a couple of different things we'll talk about in the committee. But one of the areas that I'm really rose to the top, and I think it is actually one that I had at the top anyway, myself, so good, right? We're all, we're all thinking the same things, is really to do some focus around policy 7:180, the prevention and response to bullying, intimidation and harassment. And so that, did want to share that at the beginning of that meeting, but it was definitely something that I think our staff, our families and myself all see as work that we can continue enhancing. So stay tuned on that, we'll be bringing forward. And again, some of our behavior management and attendance work and feedback that they were able to provide our, our staff on the work that they're doing, I think we will continue to see that great work from this committee. And then just put in there our chronic absenteeism, I know we're only in here for just a minute here, but wanting to keep that as something that we're sharing. It's on our dashboard, we want to make sure that we know it's important to have our students in school because they cannot be educated if they are not in school. And then our current enrollment, I know we keep throwing around the 8,500, we're not at 8,260. So that was as of Monday. And we'll continue to see how that trend works with GSRDA and all of that because this will be our, kind of our baseline to see which one of those three models we'll most likely have. Couple of reports, obviously the annual things that, that we do. One thing from last meeting that you will not see on the consent agenda, we're still working through that. We want to make sure that we have done a thorough review in bringing a variety of different potential graduation sites. So we will be bringing that in October with pros and cons to each of those. Also looking at, you know, what, what are we looking for with graduation? Not necessarily just even the venue, but what is the purpose of graduation? What do families want to see? What do students want to see? And then how do we make sure that we're hitting those things as well as location, time and all of that? So stay tuned on that one. We've had a lot of data meetings. Dr. McKernill, you might be taking that away, but the last two weeks, we've been able to get out to the middle schools and elementaries to really look at our data and see how teachers are using that in their dialogue and how do we meet the needs of our individual students that we have in our classes? And then it's been all week, but Mrs. Barr, Kimmy and I had an opportunity to head on over to Ree Road Elementary Buildings and see some of the activities that they've been doing with their start with Hello Week. And it's been going on all week long, centers around kindness. It's all kinds of activities in the classroom. One of the main classrooms that we were in over at Martin today, we're taking little strips of paper and they were making change for their classroom. It was either words of encouragement or different kindness kinds of quotes or things that, that they could say to one another, giving those kind of sentence starters, if you will. And their, their class was making a chain and then that chain was going to be linked to all of the other classrooms and it was going to be hung up. So it's going to be exciting to see, but they've been doing a lot of work just around kindness and inclusion and really getting to know, building that culture. And you could, I'm sure this is in all of our buildings, but we were, so we spent that time over there. You could really get that feel on just walking down the halls and in the classrooms that they've been really working on culture and climate because it starts there. And if people are not feeling comfortable in the setting where they're at. And if people are not feeling comfortable in the setting where they're at, they don't feel welcome, they can't be ready to learn. And I know all of our buildings are doing that, but we had a highlight because we were over there today, so I wanted to give a shout out to that. But again, it's a great start to the school year. So any questions on any of those? All right, well, I'll jump right into the next one if you're okay with that, which is our donations for the month. We had the Del Webb Sun City Pencil and Palette Club donate nine hundred blank journals for our elementary students in art over at WES, so we thank them for that support of that curriculum. And then we have fifteen different donations ranging from two hundred dollars to fifteen hundred dollars for flag football. As we know, that's the start, the inaugural year of that. So I'll go ahead and read who the donations were by. And again, we thank all of these individuals and businesses and organizations for helping get our flag football up and running. So we have Larry's Red Vananna Society, B N A Rental Properties, Salon Sapphire, King County Excavating Inc., A Tech Ambulance, Event Medical Solutions, Game Theory Escape, Mark Bittensher, one one nine one six Main Partnership, Prince Quality Beats, Min American Restoration, Charlie's Firewood, Ego Care Center, Central Sensory Dental, Becky, our Basic Becky L L C. And we know that there are more donations coming in, they will probably be on next month there, so we had to have a cutoff to get this all printed. But again, want to thank all of these individuals and businesses and organizations for the support that they provide to our students, our coaches, and our curriculum care in the district. Give them that acknowledgement.
Ms. Lomard and Ms. Altmaier, can you clarify how the flag football program is being funded and where the funding for that is coming from?
Yeah, absolutely. It's primarily being funded through the athletic, the high school athletic budget. Certainly, these donations were a surprise to me, so these are great, these are certainly going to help. But the overall cost was minimal when we approved that program to move forward. It's not what you would think as like high school boys' football program would cost, because the equipment is very different. But it's being funded through the current athletic budget.
Thank you.
Oh, she got that one. I did them first, I'm sorry when I was.
Oh, okay, sorry, sorry.
Yes, thank you, thank you to all the donors. Your generosity is greatly appreciated in support of education and students that are a district. Item ten, Assistant Superintendent for Learning and Innovation, Dr. McCrystal.
Good evening, three updates this evening. The first one is about the Illinois School Report Card. It does, we are able to view the preview of it as a district at the building level beginning October first, and then it goes live to the public on October thirtieth around nine A M. And so this will be helpful for us as we leverage that information to help guide as we build out the curriculum workshop plan, which is on November sixth from six to eight thirty P M. And so we're excited to have that information and be able to better understand where our ratings are as a district, so that we can hone in on areas of needed support and focus to help move our learning along. And so we're excited to have that information and be able to help us support our students. The second update I had is regarding grants. We have, we received actually a fifteen thousand dollar grant from Bosch Community Funds for our robotics team at the high school. We've received this grant for many years, so we're very grateful to Bosch for providing that. It is a, they help support STEM services, so science, technology, engineering, and math. And so our Huntley Robots, he was a perfect fit for that. And so they've been able to provide that for us over five years, and it should help us strengthen that program and help us go ahead and support our hands-on learning. I also wanted to let you know that we are intending to once again apply for our Illinois School Library Grant, it's a state-funded program, which is supposed to help us be able to provide library media materials to our students at the K through twelve level. We've had this grant for many, many years, and then Huntley, we get about seven, five hundred dollars from that grant, and the purpose of it is to help provide more resources in our building. So we use it for books. Last year, we really used it to help add more Ukrainian books at our elementary schools to our libraries specifically. And so we try to prioritize those funds to provide more options for our kids so that they are able to see themselves represented within our schools and their libraries. So we do have to push submit on that in the next couple of weeks, and I wanted you to know that we plan to do that as we have in the past. And then we do have a couple of future grant opportunities that Mr. Wedoff over at the high school is working on through our C T E program, through Con Ed and G Y H bearings, which I'll help support from our C T E classrooms. And so they both help support our STEM education, our technical training, and workforce development. And we are very grateful for these grants because they help provide support in ways budgetarily to allow us to support our students in these great programs that we have to offer them. And so that's coming up within our grants in the next couple of weeks. And then last thing, Ms. Lomard did hit on it briefly, but our data team meetings are going on at our K through eighth grade buildings, the high school level, does do their own version of data teams in about a month or in a couple of weeks, actually have our early release day. But these are a great time for our staff. We prioritize subbing our staff out in order to allow them time to work together and look at how our students are doing. And so they review the data from our state assessments, our local assessments such as STAR and Ames Web, and they're able to determine which kids might need interventions, which kids are excelling because we have been able to close the gap, and so who could we move from intervention? And then they are able to talk about what are they doing within their classroom instruction to adjust to meet the needs of their students. And so it's a great, it's a couple of hours that they are pulled from their classroom to work together and grade alike teams and just have these conversations and be able to better understand the students and leverage that data in order to best support their needs. And so I know we love to, we have heard those conversations, and I've done a lot of work this time, I have to give credit to Dr. Hoyu, Ms. Moan, and also Ms. Spears for helping our staff understand what the renorming is looking like. I know we talked about that at our last board meeting, but the state of Illinois has adjusted what cut scores look like and what's going to be proficient, and so that's a shift for us. And so we've been trying to better understand that so that we maintain our rigor and what we want to expect for our students, but also be responsive to what the norms are looking like as they've changed across the nation. And so we'll continue to talk about that, especially at our curriculum workshop in November, but our staff has really taken a, they've been able to help understand that and begin to learn what that looks like. So with that, if you have any questions?
I have a question. For the library grant, were there, as far as what they go to, towards, are there books going into the library for, or is it just specifically for classrooms or?
They're books into our actual library, and I shared last year, we did prioritize our elementary libraries, and so they're specifically books that were in different languages, to help represent the languages that we have in our building, because we have such a huge variety of languages, Ukrainian and other, I bet Ukrainian was a big one, I know, we bought a whole lot of books, to help make sure that, especially over here on this campus, McHaven and Conley, that they had books that students would be able to see themselves represented.
So those are the only books that are coming in, as far as?
With the grant dollars, that's how we prioritized it last year. And so we are able to use these grant dollars towards resources in the library, but we've typically been trying to connect it to what maybe our impact families are saying that they need, as well as our buildings, to make sure that our students are represented.
So the grant from last year was from the year before, right?
Yes, and so it's really, the way this grant works is you are promised funds, but then you have to submit what we're actually turning in as our receipts from last year to get the funds for this year. It's a weird way it kind of, it goes about. But we do, what we've been doing the last couple of years is just, instead of it just being, any books that we buy, we're trying to prioritize exactly what would help support the, in reference to students that we have in our building.
So we're, they're okay with giving the grant when we have full control of what comes to us from that grant?
Yeah, we make that, yeah, we make that decision, and we're able to then submit, so we buy the books, we purchase the books, and we have our library media aids in our buildings, as well as Ms. Jacobson, our director for multiple, her, she helps guide the purchases at least in the last couple of years, because of our changing population, which is great. And then we purchase those books and we submit our receipts and we reimburse.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Good questions, thank you.
All right, thank you for that. Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, Dr. Zier.
Good evening, I've got a report here, we've been tracking kind of our internal data dashboard for the board to look at, that we update throughout the year, on some, just some data that comes from H R. So a few graphs in there for you to look at, the one at the top there, the staffing count, broke those down into some of our major categories, so you can go back and see from September of last year when we started this, just to get an idea of the number of staff members that we have across the district. The graph is not representative of all staff, and we have some groups that include like out of district coaches and some other substitute groups there. That subgroup we have there are our teachers. So if that number has returned to pre-pandemic numbers, we're doing pretty strong in that sub-world, so we kept that in-house while a lot of districts decided to outsource that when things got rough. So we're proud that we're able to do that and continue to have a pretty good subpool, do interviews, I think, once a week right now as qualified applicants come in. So in H R, as we go through September here, nine-ten payroll, very big for H R and the payroll department, that is when you see a lot of the raises take place. And so I always have a few glitches, a few things to get missed, but we were able to correct those pretty quickly and get things up and running. So probably one of the smoother nine-ten payrolls that I have experienced in ten years, so it went really well. Fifth bank enrollment, that's something they're getting ready to put together here for H E A, where members of H E A are able to donate to their sister bank that was created. At your place, you should have two reports. The one sheeter is the I R compensation report, so for anyone seventy-five thousand dollars or more in total compensation, they show up on that report, we post that annually. And then the other one is the administrator and teacher salary and benefits report, that one's a few more pages from back, if you can take a look at that. But we will post those to the website before October first, and we keep the previous years up there too, so folks can take a look at those. We are also in the middle of registration for our annual wellness screenings, and I do track that on a chart down below, so you can get a good idea, the gray one at the bottom, folks that are participating in our blood draw. Those folks are employees who are on the health plan, and starting in October, we bring Northwestern on-site to all of our buildings, so folks can have a blood draw, they can also go to the Northwestern facilities offsite as of a couple of weeks ago through November thirtieth. So right now, I've got about five hundred and five folks signed up for that, so we're on track to get to that mid-six hundred number that we've been seeing the last few years since we signed the year. So we've been very successful with that, get very many compliments on that, had some life-saving blood draws, without a doubt, and people come around and very thankful that something gets caught. So great experience with the blood draw, especially the convenience that folks can go right before work starts. And as Mr. Altmaier had mentioned, we're getting ready to finalize the health insurance rate for twenty-twenty-six, with our health insurance committee next week, so I've got some ideas to bring that to that committee to adjust our current plans and to help the district save money, also the folks who are enrolled in those plans. And then once that committee meets and is in agreement, the plan is for the committee of the whole in October, we've been bringing those insurance recommendations, and then that gets us ready for open enrollment in November.
Yes, Dr. Zier, so I know this comes up a lot in the community, when I look at the staffing counts. It appears that the admin staff specifically has remained flat, so there was not any increase in admin staff.
Right.
So that would be reflective of the budget we're going to vote on later. And then just if you could clarify, like who constitutes admin staff, just so, more so from the public perspective?
Yeah, absolutely. So the folks that constitute administrative staff, there'd be a few job categories, principals, assistant principals, deans, department chairs, then you, how we categorize, categorize the admin, it would also include, you know, folks that are over here, not only folks that hold a professional educator license, principal license, superintendent license, but also positions like Mr. Altmaier's, directors of transportation, director of food services, I don't know if I mentioned somebody, I'm going to get politics too open here.
This is a good snapshot, I was looking for a snapshot, but not just.
Coordinators, I want to be the coordinators, here we go.
The music's going to key up here, so you're going to have to bring your speech to a close.
All right, guys, yeah, just, I think we got them all.
Thank you.
Goodbye.
Not hearing any additional questions, thank you for that report. Item twelve, Director of Communications, Public Engagement System.
Good evening, so I submitted several reports to the board as usual, so one is the FOIA report from last month, and just wondered if anybody had any questions on that?
I have two FOIA questions.
Okay.
Let me open it, please. One is, there are two FOIAs that were specifically asking for student names. Is there any sort of approval or anything we need to do with families on releasing student names?
Yes, so typically, we're not releasing student names, so that, you're, yeah, so that one was denied.
Okay.
So, can I answer your question?
Yeah, yep. And then the second question was, do we ever get any additional context around a FOIA request or whatever is on the spreadsheet is all the context we receive?
Typically, yes. Now, sometimes if a FOIA request comes in and it's unclear as to time period, for example, sometimes questions get asked, and you know, can we have purchase orders? Yeah, so we'll go back and say, okay, can we specify time period? So occasionally, we'll ask that, so that we're clear on what the request is. But otherwise, as long as it's clear to us, as we're looking at it, we'll fulfill it to the best that we can, assuming we have responsive documents that correspond to it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. But I will say that you may notice, like we've been getting an influx of, I would call them data-driven type of requests. We always get some commercial requests, and those are continuing too, but what we're seeing an influx of is the data-driven, and we're not the only district that is seeing that, and some also that are believed to be A I-driven. So it'll be interesting to see, right, you know, for now, we're fulfilling those to the best of our ability.
Yeah, the data-driven ones, I remember from last year, it comes up right about this time, so those organizations seem to be on autopilot, like you said, it's A I-driven and pre-programmed.
Yep, and so, any other request, or any other questions about the FOIA request? Okay, there's also a communications dashboard, which we do monthly, and that's just to kind of inform our departments, but you guys as well, as to, you know, how are we doing with our communications, how is our engagement rate looking like in our newsletters, for example, and on our social media? And it just gives us a good idea as to what's resonating with folk, and so it's a good pulse check for us to do. But any questions or anything like that on the communications dashboard?
Thank you very much for continuing to keep us abreast of what's going on within regards to communications and engagement.
Absolutely. And the third thing was just the memo that I did submit, I just wanted you guys to be aware of the communications priorities for my department this year. A lot of that is centering around the rollout of the strategic plan. So most of what we're doing is going to mirror that plan, and so we're having a lot of fun with it, right? It's been, the big focus is the visual piece of this, to make sure that that is out in our buildings for staff, for students, and for community even, we're visiting our buildings to understand what our goals and priorities are, especially those new portraits. We're going to be doing some digital storytelling based on some of those, so that we're very clear in, you know, what we're trying to do here. So our job is to really kind of showcase and highlight that, so we look forward to doing that, that specific video series a little bit later this year. But other things that have come out of that strategic plan, I would say that are influencing our, and what we're doing, would be two-way communication, more student voice, and finding some new ways to do both of those things. So it's energizing work, and we're really excited to see what we can do here. Any other, any other questions?
I have a question, Mrs. Barr. Maybe a couple of, few meetings ago, Mr. Troy had brought up streamlining our policy into maybe one document that was searchable, because right now, if you're wanting to search for a topic, you're having to drill into kind of each individual policy, there's no way to search it and say, okay, I'm looking for anything that has to do with bullying prevention, you're having to go in each individual one. Has there been any further progress on turning that into one document?
So a couple of things. The first thing I did after that was to talk with our current website vendor about what it is, we had just, you know, was the stuff at the board meeting, to find out what our options are. So. So we can set up all of that information differently on our website. But it's, it's going to take, it's going to take a bit. It's to be quite an overhaul to do that, but we definitely can do that. I think the other thing is, there are ways to search currently. I don't know if you want to speak to that to Blomberg, but I know you and I had that conversation.
No, I think we're, maybe I'm the one that needs to.
No, I mean, we've looked into just what are the different options after that? Some of the other priorities, obviously, wanting to finish up that strategic plan, roll out that strategic plan. So there are things that we could bring forward down the future. And part of that could be just, are there, whether there are little videos that we put out there on educating, like, what does that search look like? So I think there are some things that we could bring back to a future meeting. It's just some of the other things that needed to get done first and foremost.
No, I appreciate that. I just didn't want it to kind of get buried or lost when I think it is important, especially when parents, in a moment when something happens, they have a question, and it's 7 o'clock at night, and they can't, you know, they're not going to be reaching out to anyone saying, what does the policy say about this? And now you're actually having to go into individual.
But I think that's also some of the things that came to light with PTAC, right? Which one, which policies should be ones that we, regardless of how you search them, should we be bringing to the forefront and making sure that people are aware of? And those are things that we will start highlighting in our newsletter. Maybe it's, you know, we've got the behavior matrix, but, you know, some things around our curriculum, things around discipline that we can put out there in each newsletter in small chunks, because anything too big is going to be overwhelming, is what we heard, right? There's too much to read, you just shut down. And so being able to identify those things. So I do think that's something that can also come through PTAC. Yes, it'll be how we want to organize it here. But I still think it's our job to bring those things to the forefront and share those things that are extremely important, and making sure that they are user-friendly. So it kind of dovetails both of those.
Okay.
We did have that discussion in PTAC, and I thought it was a good one. The other, the other couple of other things I didn't mention that I do want to highlight, because it's a focus area for us, would be on engaging our alumni and engaging our families, and finding new ways to do both of those. But the alumni, alumni thing is, one that I think is going to be fun. I think it's mutually beneficial to connect with our alumni. We want to hear what they're doing. We know they're, you know, some are very successful out there. I mean, like, to be able to share some of their stories. They're inspirational to our current students. They're inspirational to our teachers and our staff members and all of us. So for that, and then also hopefully connecting them with our current students for that future-ready goal. And being able to, perhaps our students can do some mentoring and job shadowing, or it's just career exploration. It's just, it's just a powerful relationship to pursue, so that's an example.
But I think that starts the lines here, because one of the hardest parts for us is to be able to find, getting a database of who the alumni are and where are they, what are their contacts. It's easier for the most recent alumni, but those back in the day, having that. And they are actually having at the end of October, a large multi-year reunion. And so we're going to get some information out so that we can share these things, but also to get that database growing. So.
We'll talk things, yeah.
Well, there's, well, there's an old Huntley Facebook page out there. But they, there's multiple people from a variety of different classes. They're actually having it at the old high school, the current Park District building, and that. So being able to having, that's going to be a great resource, to be able to tap into and say, hey, can we get this here and have that database? And I know I owe you that contact. So we'll get that out there. But that'll, that'll be something for Danny.
And it's not old Huntley, it's Experience.
No, that's the name of the paper. It's something like that. I might quote it wrong, but.
I'd still like to call it Experience Huntley. Anyway, moving on. Thank you for the report, Ms. Bar. President's report. So I'm a little bit remiss. We have, that's the tables here, students who are interviewing or will be interviewing for our board representatives. So thank you for attending this evening. Thank you for your interest, and look forward to talking to you soon. Welcome, one and all. Also noted, congratulations to the entire vast network of people, volunteers, helping hands, who contributed to making this year's Hoot Nanny a success. It was good to see people I was there, a bunch of people. Obviously, there were tons of people there. But it was, it was a huge success. So thank you to each and every person who had a hand in that. And we had students earlier today who were talking about stuffing bags and things like that. So everybody who had a hand in that, great job. It was a blast. And otherwise, I don't have anything else but those things out there. Is there anything that the board has for future discussion, or no?
No, but I would like to add just a plug to the Huntley 158 Education Foundation, because the funds raised for the Hoot Nanny go to the Education Foundation. So it goes back to the, our district. How's it?
Thank you.
Actually, I, I want to do a follow-up, follow-up on one that I talked about for the discussion, for that, the coaching evaluation.
Okay.
The Google survey to, you know, students or athletes' parents at the end of seasons. And I know I brought that up, I don't know, a few months ago. I just wonder where we were at with that, because I know there's seasons happening right now. And I think it'd be good to have that implemented before that's over.
There were some people who were sharing that with the athletic director. Did you hear anything back there? I know, if, from the coaching perspective or parent perspective, I know that that was something that I reached out to our current athletic director, and they were looking into and coming up with some ways. So I can share, I could get some follow-up on that. I just know that a number of people had reached out from, and the parent had on there. She hadn't heard anything back yet.
I had just reached out and asked if we had one, any type of way that we do that. And it, she said it was, there wasn't anything. So that's why I brought it here, and then I haven't just thought about it. I'm like, you know, not that it's for later, but just a follow-up.
It tied in with our communication plan, so we can get that.
Okay, cool, thank you.
Thank you for bringing that up.
Sure.
All right, last call on anything for the board discussion?
Just real quick. Will safety update presentation that we, I think I hit cast? Or just a little presentation on, like, safety?
Safety would be a closed session.
Okay. I thought we had some information on safety before, but maybe I'm.
We can talk a little bit. Some of it can be open session. Usually, the safety protocols and all of that are done for closed session. We had one.
Right. Couple months ago, right, okay.
All right, thank you for that. Item 14, consent agenda. Anything to pull from the consent agenda for a separate vote? Not hearing anything. I move to approve the consent agenda as presented in the item 14 section of our agenda today.
Second.
Second for Mr. Bobby. So, with the vote. So all in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you, Sean. All right, not hearing any consent agenda passes 6-0. Action items, number 15, HR personnel, 15.1. Anything to add to the personnel item?
Nothing bad, thank you.
All right, with that, I move to approve the personnel report as presented in the agenda.
Second.
Second for Mr. Feckety. Have a roll call, please.
Mr. Craddy?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mr. Feckety?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bobby?
Yes.
Mrs. Myrino?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Motion passes 6-0. Item 15.2, the FY '26 budget. Before I make the motion on this, I also wanted to give a shout-out and a thank you, appreciation to all the people who had a hand in this. The budget every year is a big lift with lots of people contributing inputs and lots of late hours spent putting this together. And Altmeier making all these updates for all the different versions that come out. So thank you to you, thank you to your team, and everybody at the district who contributed to putting all of this together. Also, after the budget vote, the board needs to stick around. There are some documents that we need to sign that get filed with the state, I believe. So we don't run away. We have some signatures to do. With that, I move to approve the FY '26 budget as presented during the budget hearing earlier this evening.
Second.
Second by Mr. Feckety. And a roll call, both please.
Mr. Feckety?
Yes.
Mrs. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bobby?
Yes.
Mrs. Myrino?
Yes.
Mr. Craddy?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes. Motion passes 6-0. Item 15.3, supplemental purchase orders and accounts payable. Any questions or discussion items on this? With that, I move to approve supplemental purchase orders reports and the supplemental accounts payable for the amounts presented in the agenda.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Feckety. Roll call, both please.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mrs. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bobby?
Yes.
Mrs. Myrino?
Yes.
Mr. Fecky?
Yes.
Mr. Craddy?
Motion passes 6-0. Thank you, Mr. Craddy. Motion passes 6-0, I heard you. Item 15.4, Little City Accounts Payable Report. Any questions on this one before a vote? Hearing any questions, I move to approve the Little City Purchase Orders as presented in the agenda.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Feckety. And a roll call, both please.
Mr. Feckety?
Yes.
Mr. Bobby?
Obstained due to concept for the payable.
Mrs. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Craddy?
Yes.
Mr., Mrs. Myrino?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes. Motion passes 5-0, one retention. Item 15.5, intergovernmental agreement with Woodstock Unit School District 200 for skill.
Looking for approval for an intergovernmental agreement with Woodstock District 200 for use of their therapeutic day school. We have had students enrolled in their program to provide therapeutic day school services when students are not able to be serviced in our own district. And we would like to engage in that intergovernmental agreement with them again this year.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
How many?
Go ahead.
I was going to say, how many students would be included in this?
We typically, it changes depending on the school year, but we typically have two to three.
Thank you.
And Ms. Gil, my question is about, this is for a program that's specific to student needs that we're unable to serve in our school district.
Correct. It's a public therapeutic day program, so it's similar to.
Collective?
Yes, we, yes, they, they have their own colored day program. We are not part of their co-op, but we would be accessing their therapeutic day program.
Thank you. Forgive me, sorry, forgive me. Is there a McHenry County co-op in general? I know that SEDOM used to exist many years ago. I don't know where that is today.
They still exist in SEDOM, which is the Special Education District of McHenry County. But their operations are very limited, and, you know, they don't have a day program that we send our students to.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
It means there are levels that, something that I remembered a few years ago.
Yes.
All right, with that, unless there's any more questions, move to approve the intergovernmental agreement with Woodstock Community Unit School District 200 for the services or, for the, yes, for the services as presented in the agenda.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Bobby. And a roll call, both please.
Mrs. Murray?
Yes.
Mrs. Myrino?
Yes.
Mr. Craddy?
Yes.
Mr. Bobby?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mr. Feckety?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0. Item 15.6, Board Protocols. So just to give a little color to the public. On August 19th, the board met in closed session with the representative from the Illinois Association of School Boards, part of professional training that we do with a specific item called Starting Right Workshop. And out of that workshop came the protocols that are in, in the agenda this evening. They were agreed upon and discussed by the board members, the way that we're going to do, interact with our school district. And so, as I mentioned, these protocols are in the board packet. Know if everybody wants to go through these one by one, or just leave it for the board packet itself.
I would like. I would request that they are read aloud.
Okay.
And that, that does not fall entirely on you, Mr. Troy, but that as a board, we can take sections and read aloud different sections so that they are completely transparent to our community who is in front of us, as well as those who are watching.
Mr. Feckety said it much better than I was going to say, so I agree with Mr. Feckety.
I, I would appreciate some help in reading through these. And one by one. So I'll start. Item 1, Agenda Development. Board members who wish to have an item placed on the agenda will contact the superintendent or board president. Item B, prior to the board meeting, the board president will confer. I'll do number two.
How about we, can we just go down by each number?
That's fine.
So I'll do number two then.
Yep.
Number two, asking questions about items on upcoming meeting agendas. Board members will contact the superintendent or the relevant cabinet member and CC the superintendent with any questions about items on the agenda. B, that was A, B, board members will ask questions prior to the board meeting. C, board members understand that even if they ask questions prior to the meeting, they have the right to ask those questions at the meeting as well.
All right. Number three, board members communication via email and text. A, board members will be judicious in their use of email and text and understand that most emails are subject to the Freedom of Information Act and as such can be made public. B, in compliance with the Open Meetings Act, board members will not, will not reply all to any district email or text. C, board members will not email or text other board members stating their thoughts or opinions.
Number four, communicating with staff. A, board members will communicate directly with the superintendent. That is, board members will ask questions or bring concerns to the superintendent first and not communicate them to other staff. B, board members communicating with staff in their role as parents will remember the neon sign that reads "board member" and will not overstep their parent role.
Number five, visiting schools. A, board members planning on visiting a school. As a board member, will contact the superintendent prior to their visit.
Number six, concerns from the community and staff, quote-unquote, customer concerns. A, when hearing a concern or complaint from a community member or staff member, board members will listen carefully, remembering that they are only hearing one side of the story. B, board members will direct community member or staff member with a concern to the most appropriate person in the district to help them resolve their concern, i.e. a chain of command. C, board members will clarify that one board member has no individual authority to fix a problem. And D, board members will call the superintendent if they think it's an issue of concern.
Number seven, communicating with the media. A, the board president is the spokesperson for the board to the media. B, the superintendent or the director of communications and community engagement, depending on the circumstances, are the spokespeople for the district to the media.
Okay, eight, closed-session meetings. A, board members respect the confidentiality of privileged information and will not divulge, divulge conversations, discussions, or deliberations that take place during a closed-session meeting. B, board members understand that divulging closed-session information not only damages the relationship of the team, but also has a potential for far-reaching consequences which may impact district operations.
Number nine, board members. Number nine, board member requests for information. A, board members will self-monitor to ensure their request for information is quote, "need to know," question not quote, "nice to know," end quote. B, if a board member's request for information is estimated to take more than 30 minutes of staff time to prepare, the request will go to the full board for consensus. C, one member's request for additional information results in all board members receiving or having the same access to the information. One gets, one gets, all gets.
Number 10, no surprises. No one, superintendent or board members get surprised in the meeting or between meetings.
Item 11, board meetings. A, the board president will thank public comment participants. B, board members will model the behaviors expected of students, staff, and community members. C, board members have an obligation to express their opinions and respect others' opinions. D, board members have the right to disagree with the decision of the board, but will support the board in its decision by abiding by the will of the majority. E, issues, not people, will be the focus of discussion during meetings. F, board members will listen respectfully to each other and staff, no side conversations. G, board members will treat each other with respect. H, all board members have the responsibility to hold each other accountable to these norms and protocols.
Number 12, social media. A, board members will not ask others to post something related to board business. B, board members will not comment on board business related posts. That concludes the call and the vote.
Yep, thank you, everybody, for your participation and helping to read these. With that, I move to approve these board protocols as presented in the agenda and at this meeting.
Will second that.
Perfectly, thank you for the second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bobby?
Yes.
Mr. Craddy?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mr. Fekety?
Yes.
Mrs. Murray?
Yes.
Mrs. Myrino?
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero. Item 16, public comments. Do we have any heat?
No.
All right, thank you for that. With that, item 17 is adjournment. I move to adjourn tonight's meeting at 8:43 PM.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Fekety. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you, Mr. Craddy. Opposed? We have none. Motion passes six to zero. Thank you, everyone. Good night.
Bye, Sean.
See ya.